All right, and you should be good to go.
You're good.
Good evening, everyone. This is the November 24th, 2025 Town Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting for Newington, Connecticut. Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Sir Ford.
Here.
Commissioner Harvey.
Here.
Commissioner Minor.
Here.
Commissioner Pasquarelli.
Here.
Commissioner Sobieski.
Is excused.
Commissioner Woods. Commissioner Hoffman.
Here.
Commissioner Wachman. Well said.
Okay. All the agenda?
Yep, so I would say that you would just seat Commissioner Hoffman.
Oh, yeah.
For.
Yes, thank you.
Whoever.
Okay.
Could be for.
Let's seat Commissioner Hoffman for Chairman Sobieski.
Okay, so there are no changes on the agenda, except just to note, for the petitions received for scheduling, it's listed as 77 Payne Road. When the hearing notice gets published in the paper, it'll say 77, AKA 77 to 93, for anyone following along. That's just something where the properties have been mostly combined. So for chain of custody and for title, it's good to just list both. So that'll just slightly change, but it doesn't need to change for you tonight.
Correct. All right, so, public participation? Is there anyone here in the public who would like to participate related to items not on the agenda?
There is no one online.
Yep, and we do have someone in the audience, but I would say that would be for the second.
Okay.
Of the participation after the applicant is done.
All right, then moving on to the next item, remarks by commissioners.
No.
Anyone here have any comments? Chris? No. Okay. Then we'll move on to the public hearing.
Yes. So you just call the public hearing to order?
Okay, so I'll read the notice then?
So what you can do is I would just read the title, and then I will read the full notice into.
Okay. So we'll begin the public hearing, and this is for petition TPZ 25-21 Special Permit 3.11.1 for a place of assembly or recreation indoor swim facility at 1581 Southeast Road in Business Zone, B-zone. Applicant owner, 1599 Southeast Road LLC, contact Steve Marzalak. Sorry if I didn't get that.
So to read the notice that was put into the rare reminder, Newington Town Planning and Zoning Commission, Notice of Public Hearing, November 24th, 2025, at 7:00 PM. Notice is hereby given that the Newington Town Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing in Council Chambers, Room 103, at Town Hall, 200 Garfield Street, Newington, Connecticut. On Monday, November 24th, 2025, consider the following petitions. Petition TPZ 25-21 Special Permit 3.11.1 for a place of assembly for recreation indoor swim facility at 1581 Southeast Road in the B-business zone. Applicant owner, 1599 Southeast Road LLC, contact Steve Marzalak. This public hearing will be a Zoom webinar hybrid meeting. Information on how to attend, we've posted on the town website at link follows. These petitions and related materials are available for public inspection at the Town Planner's Office, Town Hall Room 204, and through the publish agenda at the Town Plan and Zoning Commission Agenda Center at link follows. Persons who require an accommodation to participate in this public hearing should contact the Town Planner at 860-665-8578, or TownPlanner@newingtonCD.gov. Not less than 24 hours prior to the, before the public hearing submitted Paul Dixon, Town Planner, and this ran in the rare reminder on November 13th and November 20th. And the public hearing sign was posted.
Perfect, okay, so will we start with the applicant then?
Yes.
Okay, if you'd like to join us, please have a seat.
We gotta get.
Hold on, let's get a microphone.
Normally, I can do that pretty well in a room too, so. Perfect, thanks.
Thank you, we'd like your name and address.
Sure, my name is Steve Marzalak. The address that we're representing is 1581 Southeast Road. My business address is out of Detroit, Michigan, 2725 Dakota, Royal Oak, Michigan, 48073. Appreciate you taking the time tonight, commissioners, to hear our change of use application for this location. We're very excited about presenting this, and you know, it's an unusual piece of property, obviously, that is split between two towns, between you and Farmington. And Water and Sewer is also not related to your town as well. It's New Britton serves the sewer system, and MDC serves the water system. So we've done a fair amount of due diligence over the past couple of years. I looked at this property about three years ago as well, and we didn't have the team in place like we do today. So what we're asking for, at least from the Newington side of things, is to have our change of use from a typical retail to an A3 swim recreational facility. We currently have locations in the Hartford area, one in Manchester, Goldfish Swim School, so one in Manchester and one in Cromwell. For those who may or may not have, you know, grandkids, kids, neighbors, and so forth that might have participated, we are a learn-to-swim facility that teaches kids typically from four months of age to 12 years of age. We are a membership-driven facility. We do have some opportunities for the public, birthday parties on a limited basis, and some family swim opportunities, so the public is welcome to, you know, join our facility. But we, our primary focus is to teach, teach kids how to be safe in and around the water, and give them an opportunity to, you know, progress their swimming skills from, from a variety of standpoints. So very, very, very acclimated for those who are not familiar with Goldfish. We teach in 90-degree water and 92-degree air temperature in our facility. So in this particular building, that's formerly the Barnes &amp; Noble, or will be formerly Barnes &amp; Noble, we're taking the portion, one-third portion of the space, which again is in the town of Newington. We have a retailer who's taken the front portion of the space there in the Farmington Retail Center. It was just announced a couple of weeks ago, there'll be Anoush Jewelers, who'll be moving out of the West Farms location into this location, with some other tenants to be determined in the middle portion of the space. Paul and Eric have given us, you know, some, some asks during our review process that we thought we, we'd address in some respects, so if there was any need, I'm happy to, you know, go over that. But, you know, some things that they, they had asked for that we thought we'd bring up, obviously, what our swim school is and how we, how we, how we use our lessons was, was important. You know, we have seen in the packet, I believe that was attached, is our floor plan, so you can kind of see how we set up our facility. It's very conducive to our locations. There's 202 Goldfish Swim Schools throughout the United States. So it's a model that has worked very well. We're the single largest provider of swim lessons in the United States. And one of the things that I think is, is unusual about this space is, you know, our ability to serve the community on a multi-town basis, so Newington, Farmington, New Britton, and the surround West Hartford market is very important to, you know, capturing what we, we'd like to provide for everybody. We, as part of your design package that you have, we plan on taking a little bit of a different approach to the building and kind of debranding it as the former Barnes &amp; Noble, and, you know, redoing some of the exterior facade, making it a little bit simpler, a little bit more 2026 in some respects, based on those pictures that you saw. So we're keeping the majority of the, you know, the, it won't be a white building anymore. It'll have some nice soft tones that I think complement the, the property. There's some, some metal siding that's very specific to our brand. And throughout the, you know, the, the building here, there's some nice signage that will go on, on those elevations. And we're just going to make it look a lot simpler, not kind of what you see now in some respects, shorten the, shorten the heights, streamline some of the, some of the things. We're also going to look at the site, unfortunately, I can see has not been well-maintained for the past as many years. I think that's come up in our conversations with Farmington and Newington, that the trash has not been picked up as well. The, the sightlines and the trees and so forth are a little overgrown. The bushes are not exactly kept up, so we plan on working with Farmington and Newington to clean up the landscaping. We plan on enhancing the parking lot lighting to a newer, newer standard, a little brighter, but still meet all the requirements that are set by the, the town. We've already talked about that with Paul and Eric in some respects. But, you know, LED fixtures, proper cutoff, you know, lights, but, you know, give it a, give it a fresh look in some respects of what, what we're doing. Some other questions that had come up during our, our review process is, you know, the parking, the parking requirements. Obviously, it's a rather large site, it has over 124 parking spaces. So we meet the requirements as set by zoning currently, based on that. And we kind of outlined that in our narrative here, but, you know, just so if anyone has any questions. But Goldfish, you know, was to require 37 spaces. There's 67 spaces within the town of Newington boundary line. The site balance will need a total of 87. When we looked at the Farmington requirements for retail, as well as the split, there'll be a, a very interesting building conversation between Newington and Farmington as to who's going to inspect what during, but I understand it's not uncommon. There's a few pieces of property that exist from the building side of things. So from the zoning side of things, we also met all the parking requirements for ADA and retail for the Farmington-Newington splits as they come, as they come forward. So we don't plan on any additional parking because of that. We're also, Goldfish is a little heavy in the afternoon swim lessons. You know, kids are out of school. We do have some day lessons and so forth, but primarily our weekends are our busiest times. So it's a good complement between ourselves and Anoush, and hopefully our future tenant, you know, at the end of the day. We did look at, and it will be part of our building requirements, you know, we have looked at the water and sewer usage. So we have a sign-off from New Britton already for the sewer usage. It's a forest paint, if anyone's interested, if it's not that exciting, but they, they've given us approval for it. We are on the top, tail end of their line. And the water, obviously, is MDC, and we have a two-inch water service coming in, so we'll be able to, you know, address all of the requirements necessary for our swim school and the future tenants at the end of the day. So just wanted to kind of at least make sure everybody, you know, saw that we are applying for a new pylon sign. I believe that will be under the Farmington jurisdiction. So we, we do plan on enhancing that a little bit and making it a little bit more forward-facing, so people can see it and see it from the roads as such. So there was a few things on that, on the, on the site plan. So then there were some comments that came back during the review process. Landscaping, I think I talked a little bit about, I updated the, we had some, some information on parking spaces and square footage that we made sure that we checked those boxes. There was a question that did come up, I'm sure you saw it on your package. Again, we're, we're not, we're not a, a, you know, if you have a neighborhood swim program, and sometimes you have swim meets and there's 100, 200, 300 kids, we don't, we don't maintain that type of program. We, we have something that's very similar in nature, but it's called swim force. And, but it's just a recreational program for the members that are already there. So there's typically 10 to 20 kids who might swim on that, but they're on the older side, and they have graduated through most of the Goldfish swimming program in some respects. So they've mastered the skills, they just want to have fun, they're not, it's not a competitive program. Hopefully, it's something that, you know, offers them a little bit of confidence in, you know, moving their skillset forward. Talked a little bit about the exterior lighting. You saw on the plans there, the, the elevations. There are some things that the, the team, Farmington and Newington, did get together on. So there are some things on the site that we do know we need to do. There's, there's some property items that we need to address, a couple paving-related issues, some guardrails, some tree maintenance that needs to be done. I'll plan on all, all our items that we plan, plan on solving in, in some respects as we go through construction in 2026. And that is kind of the general idea of what Goldfish is and what we're proposing to in front of the, the town tonight.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Commissioner Harvey?
Chair. You have in one, in your sketch here, under the land building parking data, a white box retail. Is that? That'd be a proposal for an additional tenant of some kind, and you're doing just the minimum work?
Correct, we are for right now. We are entertaining some lease offers right now. Right now, we're, that is proposed as a white box for a future retailer, or restaurant, or, you know, something that, you know, would suit the, suit the needs of the building.
So wouldn't be anything that the swimming entity would be codependent on, then?
No.
Would be a separate?
Correct.
And you had mentioned a canopy, did I read that somewhere?
There is a, there are some building elements that are canopy-related. They're just some little overhangs, you know, to define a front entry for our space and for the Anoush Jewelers space. But they're very, they're very minimal in, in nature, they're not, you're not like fabric awnings. You're kind of a, a flat, come out about three, four feet, just kind of a, it defines the front entry. Oh, it defines the entry of the tenant that you're going into, I'll put it that way.
And then on zoning, no question, can you walk us through the day of a student comes into you?
Uh, our swim lessons are about 30 minutes, so that's about the average stay for, for a child. And again, depends on, you know, depends on a lot of things. But, you know, typically, it's a 30-minute lesson, so they arrive about 10, by 10, 15 minutes early. They get changed, and, you know, we have what we call changing huts, not a, no, it's not like a men's or women's bathroom, but we have little changing huts that mom, or dad, or aunts, uncles, grandparents can take into, so everything is very unisex-oriented, because you just don't know who's bringing, you know, the, the child that day. It could be, it could be a variety of, of people. So we have changing huts, they get changed, and they wait for their swim lesson. They take a nice 30-minute swim lesson in our facility. And then the, we have an opportunity within the floor plan, you'll see some showers on the pool deck. So they'll take a, take a quick rinse-off shower if they want, you know, shampoo, rinse-off, and then go back outside to the changing huts, change again, go over to the hair drying station, and blow dry their hair, and, you know, grab a, grab a quick prize on the way out. So they're, they're typically there about, you know, 40 to 50 minutes, you know, start to finish.
If I may.
Major membership.
I was just gonna, so just the spaces 1 through 14 on the floor plan, those are the huts, the changing huts?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, that's why I just wanted the commission to be clear.
Thank you, yes.
No problem, sorry to interrupt.
Thank you.
So the people that train the, the kids to swim, are those lifeguard certified?
We have lifeguards, yeah, we have, we have, you know, everybody within a Goldfish is lifeguard certified. And we have on standby lifeguards, at any time anyone's in the water, there's always a lifeguard, you know, presence. So that's, again, it's not an open building, it's, it's, you know, fully secured and locked down in, in some respects. But everyone that's in the water, there's a lifeguard, all of our swim instructors, you know, it's a curriculum of about four to one. It just depends on the class some days, because some could be four to one, could be three to one, two to one, just depends on the day and time.
So it's a good day for grandma and grandpa, right? Be there for a good part of the day anyway.
Well, at least a good start to finish, you know, 30, 40 minutes.
Yeah. Well, that's great. With, in Newington here, our Parks and Rec Department, for a period of time, had a very difficult time getting lifeguards.
Yeah.
Would you consider your operation a lifeguard feeder at some point in time?
It, it's up to the, you know, it's up to the people that we hire, but hopefully there's an opportunity, you know, if there's something to share, happy to do so. Maybe there's opportunities if, if someone's teaching, you know, if they're teaching our swim kids, hopefully summertime, they have an opportunity to, you know, pick up some additional hours somewhere else. Just because we will not have, like, summertime, we do not expand our hours to go from 8:00 AM to, you know, 5:00 PM. So we, our swim lessons would still be from 4:00 PM to, say, 6:00 or 7:00 PM. So hopefully those individuals would take advantage of whatever certifications they have and, and use them to their advantage. I mean, that's a commodity, there's no doubt about it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
Does anyone else have any questions for the applicant?
Seems very direct to me, like you've done your homework.
Well, thank you, appreciate it.
Yep, and I'll just add, so the town planners report, the applicant has been great to work with. Again, we reviewed it as far as, so this is primarily in front of you just for a change of use. Anything that's kind of proposed on the site, there are some minor improvements, specifically with light poles, repair to a sidewalk here or there, and some cleaning up of the site. So it's nothing that would rise to the level of requiring a site plan per our regulations. You have the ability to require one, but again, staff does not see a requirement for a brand-new site plan for this application, primarily just a change of use. Interesting when looking at the parking itself, we looked at it both ways. It was noted in the staff report that the applicant used 1 to 200. The last school used 1 to 200, which was school. You have place of assembly for recreation, which is 300, but 1 to 300. But by either measure, this site complies with the regulations, so we have absolutely no issue there with the town. They did revise their amounts, as they noted, to know how much is available in Farmington, just to make sure there's no permitting issues for there going forward. So it's clearly understood what is required, just to, that, that makes sure that they can actually utilize this plaza, both in Newington and in Farmington. I think it's a good opportunity, especially with the kids in the area, having them all, having everything nearby. It'll be good for the people who visit there. It's another, just another feature for that area. So again, staff does not, does finds that the regulation complies. We do have two suggested conditions. One was based upon the light poles. Eric, you can bring it up real quick, because we put in the record, we put it in front of you guys as well too, tonight. They did submit a new photometric plan. The last photometric plan showed 24-foot light poles. I think that was just an oversight by the designer. Now they're showing them, I believe, at 16, if I'm correct. And they vary on 12 to 16 on the site. Again, as long as they're underneath, under 17 feet tall, they're fine by the Newington regulations. So that is one of the conditions of approval. And the second one, the approvals for sewer are new, and that, so we had a condition there just, as a, to tie it to the special permit regarding just the requirement for those permits for utilities and for health department, again, because it's been moving. It is difficult to work with utility companies and get all those approvals. But again, this is not a new building. If this was a new building, new service, and you would really have a question with whether it could actually meet the demand, but the applicant has talked to the utility companies, and again, that's why we included that condition, just to kind of note it. So those are the only two conditions that staff would recommend for this application.
Great.
Just have one other quick thing to follow. So there's nothing that we're, that we are approving for this gentleman's company that Farmington could say, well, you have this approval on the poll, but we're not happy with how that impacts something else? That couldn't possibly happen, right?
The only, yeah, the only thing I could see is, you know, if they look at parking. And parking is one of those, you need it, it's horrible to have to make it, you never want to increase it more than it has to be, but you need what you need. So I think that's a matter of, that could be the only future thing for Farmington to say, say a restaurant opens, and they have a higher level. That's also why I specifically did note, they do have the 1 to 200, but we also have a 1 to 300, where it's place of, you know, a place of assembly for recreation, which is pretty much what this special permit is for. So again, there's that little disconnect, the last swim school was that 1 to 200. I think it was viewed as more school, a little more stringent, place of assembly for recreation. I think we could easily work with Farmington, especially, it's good to actually discuss that on the record, that the commission would have no issue in looking at the difference between those two uses. Again, when they're talking about at the most, kind of like 10 students coming in. So hopefully one caller, maybe sometimes two, but if you're saying a requirement of, you know, well, 25 spaces would be based on our 1 to 300. I think 25, if you're looking at that's two and a half per student, you have the people who are there. That seems like it would actually work with this type of use. So we would definitely work with Farmington if there are any questions. But if the commission would like to discuss that on the record, that would actually be, I think, useful for the applicant going forward, just to make sure we're not overburdening the site, make sure it can be what it could be in that area.
I would recommend something like that, so that we don't create a problem. Inadvertently.
Yes.
But, I mean, it's a great project, and it's an important one. I obviously haven't done a number of these in other business, and the improvements that have to be done to that building.
Any other, any other comments from the town? Okay.
Again, we have, so at this point, while there is, if there are anyone, so now if there's no other comments, we'd be calling for anyone in favor or anyone against.
Do we want, and do we have to close this and then move this to old business?
You would be, yep, if you were inclined to close it tonight, which I would agree.
Okay. So I was.
Call to the public.
Oh, yeah, okay, so that's right. So the public hearing, is there anyone in the public would like to comment in favor of this application? Online?
No one online, Mr. Chairman?
Anyone in the public?
With all the hundreds that we have.
I know, anyone in the public who would like?
I'll just say I.
Oh, come on.
You just got it.
You're being part of the record now.
Yes, please let us know, Jacob.
I'm Jacob Nolton, I live on Ten Hill Side Street. Yeah, that seems too much dramatic, I'm just gonna do this. I just wanted to say, I was actually, I saw your flushing location yesterday. I was, I believe so, and it's a simple operation. So any kind of concerns about Farmington approving this? I don't, personally, I don't foresee it. So it's a small site, your parking lot's already pretty big, and it seemed like for the mall operation, it was fairly passive in terms of who was going in and out, small groups. So, yeah, but I just thought it was serendipitous, I literally just saw that yesterday.
Okay, so thank you, Jacob. Anyone else here online want to comment in, in favor? Probably not, we have got, covered everybody. Anyone in the public want to comment negatively toward this application?
Again, no one online?
All right. So I think that takes care of the public. I have a question, Paul. The discussion about parking, that is not, we, we are not going to talk about changing the qual, the required amount tonight, right?
So, again.
This came up just now, a moment ago.
Yeah, the, the application came in with a 1 to 200 statement. Again, that's what the other, that's what on Payne Road they had used. What we would interpret it potentially at the 1 to 300, place assembly for recreation, especially with this type of use.
Yep.
I would say, just during the record, if you're happy to state here, or either during your approval, that you approve of a 1 to 300 to be used in the future. That way, when someone looks at this in the future, that we can adjust, and just to make sure that they're not locked into the 1 to 200 that they put in. So you can either make it a part of your motion, you know, or I would, potentially for approval, tonight too, after closing the hearing, you could discuss it during the hearing right here. You can take a unanimous consent type of discussion. I think it's just as long as the record is clear, but I potentially would make that something stated as one of the, not conditions of approval, but as part of the approval. So when you go to make the motion after closing the public hearing, as long as everyone's okay with that.
That's what I was going to ask, if anybody wanted to discuss that aspect of it before we close.
I'm fine with it.
No, I'm good.
I'm good. Okay. Cool. Chris, any thoughts on that before we?
No, I think it's appropriate to go with the 1 to 300 as well.
All right. Would anyone like to make a motion, Commissioner?
Thank you, ma'am chair. Move that we close a public hearing and move it for decision tonight.
Seconded.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so. You're abstaining, okay. You're just, you're consigliere here?
No, we have the, the record, we just rise at 7:20. Commissioner Woods? No, we have the, the record, uh, which is rise at seven twenty. Commissioner Woods.
All right.
Okay. All right. So the public hearing is closed. So now we move on to the. Agenda. And then we break the flow of things by moving to approval of the minutes. Yeah.
Yep. All second.
Yep. And just for the, for the record, that was approval of the minutes from November twelfth, twenty twenty-five.
Yep. So, uh, motion made by Commissioner Fox.
Correct.
I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Sounds good. All right.
Now we move to new business.
New business. So I can read this.
Yes.
Petition TPZ twenty-five dash twenty-one special permit, section three point eleven point one. For a place of assembly, uh, for recreation indoor swimming facility. At fifteen eighty-one Southeast Road in the B business zone applicant owner, fifteen ninety-nine Southeast Road LLC, contact Steve Marzalak.
So before you make your motion, this is when it's a little out of order on that one, but what I'd recommend, you do have a draft motion in front of you, kind of what was discussed. Um, in discussing with Eric, I think it might be approval to say, uh, motion to approve the change of use to a place of assembly for recreation. With a parking ratio of one per three hundred spaces of GFA with the following conditions, and that will really solidify.
So with a parking ratio of one, two, three hundred, GFA.
Gross floor area.
Comma with the following.
One space per three hundred square foot of GFA.
Okay, that's helpful. All right. Okay, yeah, I'm not sure how it works. So thank you.
Yep. So it'd be someone else if you want to delegate your secretary task.
Sure. Could you make the motion? That'd be great. Commissioner Harvey, thank you.
Petition TPZ dash two five dash two on special permit, section three point one one point one for place of assembly for recreation.
Yep.
Of indoor swimming facility at fifteen eighty-one Southeast Road. In the B business zone applicant owner, one five nine nine S C. Southeast Road LLC, contact Steve Marzalak.
Okay.
To include, uh, language, one to three hundred spaces.
Here.
Parking.
Read from here. Motion to approve. Read with my, um, with my note there.
Motion to approve, move to approve the change of use. To replace the assembly and recreation with the following conditions with a parking ratio of one to three hundred. GFA.
Correct.
Okay. You're testing these old eyes.
Sorry. Yeah.
One, the photometric plan and site lighting details is subject to review and approve by the town planner and CEO. For conformance prior to the issuance of a building permit to the applicant shall obtain all applicable permits, including utility and health department permits. And any other conditions added by the commission. Reason for approval, the application meets the requirements for B zone and the special permit criteria.
Great.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And did, I didn't hear if Chris was in favor.
In favor, yes.
Thank you. All right. Motion passes unanimously.
With one abstain on.
I can keep going.
Okay.
Yep. I mean, I think it's downhill from here. Um, all right. So, um. Old business?
None.
Uh, petitions received for scheduling?
Yep. This is the one that was noted earlier. Um, again, it's just for a free standing sign that eventually we might get around to changing, do not require a special permit for, but for now we're still in it. And that that's, it's seventy-seven ninety-three Payne Road, but that'll be in the public hearing notice. Um, the other one that's not on here, again, we've been talking with, um, Tocan. Uh, so the Boff semi-annual. Um, site plan and review should be on your agenda for the tenth. Uh, so you'll have that for the tenth and there may be others, but then again, that's your organizational meeting. Um, we can actually talk about that for scheduling. Um, that was the one where I had talked with, uh, Chairman Sobieski. In the past two years, uh, we've actually done it during the meeting instead of having a special meeting ahead of time.
Used to do it before.
Yeah, the organizational meeting, it can be done either way. I think the organizational meetings haven't taken that much time. Um, and if you have a loaded schedule, yes, it's good, uh, for applicants on that one. But right now we have a special permit for a sign in the Boff. Um, so it's, it's a matter of the commission. If you would prefer to do it earlier, then again, that's you getting here a half hour earlier and. Going through that process, or if you prefer to just do it as part of the regular meeting. I don't know if anyone has any, uh.
I mean, I'm, I'm okay with making it a little earlier. What?
Okay.
Um, anyone else have an issue or conflict? Fifteen?
Yep. So then we would advertise it as a special meeting.
Still be sitting around for ten minutes.
Yep. And that'll be the calendar and it'll be that. And also we'll see, um, what appointments, um, and then new commissioners.
That's right.
And then, yep.
The, the election?
Yes.
Okay. Fair.
We also got the liquor application.
Oh, yeah. You can, you can say that you just got that in. It's not.
And this week we also just received an application for, uh, an addition of live, uh, live entertainment to liquor permit. This is at the Prime Burgers on Kelsey Street. So that will be coming forth. I suspect that will, won't be until January.
Okay.
Yep. And we just received it. So we don't need a chance, but then scheduling and the hearing notice is already out for the December tenth meeting and there is no second meeting in December.
Correct.
Okay. Good to know. Thank you. All right. So that takes care of, um. Scheduling, town planner report?
Yep. So I do not have, uh, too much to report to you tonight. Um. Again, we are moving forward with a couple of different, uh, reports. I am working with, um, West Hartford and we hope to get the RFP out soon for the rec trails. Uh, again, they got their rec trails grant. We got ours. Ours is delayed slightly as we've kind of aligned it. But it does make so much more sense to work with them because we had one route. They're kind of similar on the route and kind of going around potentially through the flood control area. And looking at a connect to more different, um, parts of the trail. So I think together we're going to create a better trail plan. Uh, again, this, this trail plan, the goal of this at the end of the day is to have something in hand that specifically says, here's the best route. We've talked with all of the users, New Brandon, West Hartford, Newington, all of us who are going to be using this trail. And look for the best way to get possible through, look at the best way to connect, um, the Newington Junction Historic District. Cause we talked about the, you know, historic loop there in the past. That's something that did start. We need to look at it. It will take some work, um, you know, bringing in those historic resources and kind of bringing them, highlighting them. Uh, but that's actually the project. So, uh, another project is a historic resource inventory that we should be working on getting the RFP on that about the same time. And again, there are a bunch of different projects we're working on right now, but I kind of want to update yous. I think those ones are on the near horizon. For us getting the RFPs out and getting moving. Um, we do also have, uh, we brought it up, I think. Two meetings ago or one meeting ago with the zoning regulations, uh, especially for the town center master plan. Uh, Jacob Nolton is here tonight. Uh, he actually is gonna, during the public participation, provide a little bit of housing information too, but also some comments on the master plan. Again, we accept all comments. Nothing is set in stone, as we said. But I think this is a good opportunity for us to start looking at the zoning regulations, probably starting with the town center. But also parallel working on looking at our neighborhoods, um, especially with the correspondence. I don't know if you ever had a, did you get the formal one put together from the ZBA?
Uh, I have a draft memo available. I just, I ran late and didn't attach it to this agenda.
Yep. So that'll be attached for your next meeting. Again, from the ZBA, looking at, um, our neighborhoods. And what neighborhoods were previously like an R seven, smaller lots, and that have been, um, technically down zoned to larger lots, R twelves. Um, and thinking about what housing is there, what the real impact could be of kind of. Legalizing the housing that's already there and making it so they can do a garage without having to go to the ZBA. They, they can do what is similar in the same neighborhood without saying, okay, my neighbor is over there. Technically for a variance, you can't say. That, oh, my neighbor has it, therefore I should, because it's, that's the way zoning works with, they're all considered non-conformities. But those things work in those neighborhoods. So that'll be a larger discussion. I know that can be. A difficult discussion, especially when you're talking about single family neighborhoods. But again, the goal here, um, from the department not be. Looking at how can we dramatically change? It's what exists there now? And how can we make sure that those residents can just continue enjoying their house and put a front porch on? We've had multiple front porch. Um, uh, variances denied in the past too, because there wasn't a legal hardship. But it's a front porch. We used to have random lines as part of old zoning. You used to encourage that level, that front porch, that level of community having access rather than. Your only place to be outside is your backyard and the front yard is ceremonial and closed off. So I think there's some opportunities. Again, it's going to be a big discussion with the community. It's not anything we're going to do just by ourselves. But I think it, there's an opportunity here to kind of look at it. And again, that's actually came from the ZBA. Of, okay, they don't, you know, they don't want to have to be in a position to deny something that kind of makes some sense for the neighborhood.
I mean, that really that five to ten feet sometimes is all, is all they need. And that, and that's what those houses were originally built at and they were conforming. Until it got rezoned and then you made all these houses non-conforming. And, and again, that five to ten feet is, is all they really need in most cases. That'll, that would allow them to put in a front porch. Like you said, it would allow them to build second story additions on garages and other things where, where now they, they have to go to the ZBA and. Yep. And there, and there have been cases, just since I've been doing the last five years where. They've approved and denied a, a second floor addition on a garage. They had one guy put a four foot notch in his. It is what it is, but that's.
Yep. Again, this is, this will consider all of the things that zoning can consider, life safety issues. A matter of making sure that there's accessibility for emergency response, making sure that, because we don't want to create a situation where you can't. But if there is accessibility, again, this will be a process that we look at, but just to let you know, that is on our radar and something I would really like to do, uh, for the community.
Commissioner Woods?
Are you talking about rolling back the R seven zones or amending the R twelve? To allow some of this?
So that's part of the big discussion as part of it, because it could be a big rezoning on that. And are some areas more appropriate as R twelve or not? And how does the community feel about that? There's going to be a lot of questions, I know. But I, I do want to make it crystal clear. There's nothing written yet. This is just something that we would like to do for the residents who have faced these issues. But again, with life safety issue in mind, with talking with the fire department to make sure EMS can respond. Fire marshal, everyone to say, okay, what are the practical limitations? You know, I've seen multiple zoning regulations where like, okay, they get a little screwy. When you kind of say, you can build a little closer here, but you must leave this side open. It, it's always just to make sure that no matter what, you could get. Past it, past the property, but that would be, that's actually my first and foremost concern is the most important thing about setbacks is fire safety. It's about, are they far enough apart? Can you get, um, equipment? Can you get personnel through there? And can you get a stretcher to the back if you have something impeding the front where you need emergency response to the back? Those are, that's like the most important thing first. Then after that is, how does the community feel about the feeling of the neighborhood? Again, we're not looking at changing neighborhoods that already are built as R twelve right now to say, okay, you know, everyone is conforming. This is more looking at things that have been changed to say, is there a reason why it should be that way and should we be helping this community out? But again, this will be a discussion with the TPZ. This is not, uh, you know, mine to just do, but it is something that we've kind of been asked to look at.
It's those subdivisions that were approved as R ten and later got rezoned to R twelve. Because they all have the five foot side, side yard setbacks and usually a twenty-five foot front yard. And then when it got rezoned, thirty-five foot front yard and ten foot on the sides. They lost property and those houses at the time were built. In conformance. And then when you've got rezoned, they're made non-conforming.
Still a few properties off of Connecticut Avenue, fucking street in there, twenty-five foot lots, twenty-five foot frontage. And there's a house on it.
Yeah. Yeah. We have, we have lots of interesting little lots, uh, through the town that kind of developed over time.
When that, that piece, that track was developed, they sold twenty-five foot lots. Most people bought two, but not everybody did. You didn't have to. You could build a house on the twenty-five.
And, and the ones that have existing, people have put houses on and it allows them to live somewhere that's actually more affordable.
Twenty-five by fifty deep.
Yeah. You're kind of forced to build a smaller house in those cases, but you have to build a smaller house, which costs less money to build. The lot costs less money. Ends up being a more affordable solution to someone who doesn't want a huge house. It was fine with, you know, a small bungalow or something.
We're way ahead of the time with little houses.
Yep.
All right. Um, so that, thank you for all that information. Um, and current land use applications can be viewed online.
Yep.
On the website, as we know. Um, the next item is communications CROG letters. Any questions or comments about the letters that were in our packet? Got anyone tonight?
Okay, the one item, and I thought I had printed it out, uh, for communications. Actually, I just remembered, um, there was a notice today because it'll be included in your next packet. See if I can find it and put it up. On the scan. Uh, this was sent to me, uh, the town and the, um, inland wetland agent. Um, it's just, it's, it's nothing that will be. Too dramatic, but I did want to put it out there for your attention and I'll actually. Put it up on communications for the next one, but let's share this.
Spends is killing us.
That's, yeah. As I'm talking, as I'm trying to be like, okay, come on computer.
Again, these are the notices we get. We get these from time to time. Um, it is a, a declaratory ruling, um, to the sighting council. Uh, but this is for the DOT headquarters. Uh, it's something where they're looking at putting, uh, one point seven megawatt AC canopy mounted solar vatech. Again, we just received this, uh, today, but I did want to bring it to the, uh, commission's, uh, attention. You can kind of see there's the DOT headquarters. Everywhere you see blue is where they were planning on putting canopies. So a lot of these canopies will be, you know, out of, mostly out of sight. You have these ones along the road. It looks like there's good vegetation. Along there. Uh, this is just one, I just want to put it out there. Again, we do not have jurisdiction over the Department of Transportation.
Yep.
The sighting council ones are ones where citizens and towns can comment on them. But again, the DOT is looking at opportunities for more potential green energy generation. I think, and also the canopies will be great for their employees, uh, to be able to park underneath them and, you know, especially during a New England winter. When you do or don't have snow or especially when you have sleet and your car will be nice and, uh, not covered in ice.
And there, um, is, is that lower parcel where the, um, EV charging is?
I think the EV charging is on the northern parcel right here.
Yeah.
The lower parcel, that's the commuter lot. It is, it is very well screened.
And I believe it's another part of the training. Chris was saying is another part of the training facility, but again, well, we just received this today, but I did want to just bring it up for the commission's attention. Looked at it with a town engineer briefly, did not see too many issues, but again, it's just kind of out there that if you do have any comments, you can comment to the sighting council. Um, the community knows as well. And there will be a little bit more visible than afar a field type of solar tucked away in the woods.
Okay. So, and, and then back to CROG letters. If there's no questions about the letters, the CROG letters that we received. Then we can move on to public participation?
Yes.
Okay. So this is public participation, part two, for anyone here who would like to, um, comment. And I think Jacob, please, Jacob Nolton, please join us.
Very much. Um, I have some pen notes to follow along with. Uh, you already got the housing info, so.
Right here.
This is for you.
All right. Thanks, sir.
For you.
Thank you.
For you, and I miscounted that one.
Look on with him.
You sure?
No, you. You're not gonna let me do that? Oh, Mike.
Absolutely.
Okay.
See?
So before Jacob starts, in anticipation, again, this was kind of a, I was, uh, uh, Chairman Sobieski did give me a call a little earlier today, letting him know that he did speak with Jacob and. But he was going to come speak tonight. Um, again, it's generally public participation. Might last more than three minutes. Uh, so. For our rules, as long as the commission unanimously consents, um, to him going on for more than three minutes, he can do so. But I did want to bring that to order, just so we're not seeing his picking.
If everyone's okay with that, then going more than three minutes for Jacob?
We never pay attention to that anyway.
No.
However.
Now it's official.
It's official and this one, we kind of anticipated it ahead of time.
We picked a good meeting to come where we, you know, it's not, it's not, it's not ten o'clock at night.
Yeah, I'm, I'm glad I could make it as well. Um, I appreciate you guys giving me this time. I don't anticipate to take more than. A lot more than three minutes, but, um, I did want to, uh, in all transparency, I work, uh, for CROG. Um, I'm that signature that you get on the bottom of the CROG letters. Um, and I'm here both kind of, uh, to give some information for CROG. But also I live in town, uh, at Ten Hillside Street. Um, uh, and so I'm going to make some comments as a citizen as well. Um, so the, uh, my name's Jacob Nolton. Uh, the, the first item that I gave to you on top of the packet is, um, some housing and funding information. Um, at the bottom of that page is. a contact Ben Lovejoy, who is D O H's um kind of community liaison. He's a great person to reach out to, is very responsive. Should you be interested in any housing projects, willing to kind of just spit out ideas. So most of this information comes from him. Um on the back is going to be a Q R code uh just table for all of the um links on the front. Um in the front is just kind of my quick synopsis of what those funding opportunities are typically used for. But I thought because of the um the town plan being relatively housing focused, um I noticed in the plan there were some funding opportunities and I just took the time to kind of add some more, just in case. So that's that. Um some other things related to housing for CROG are, we're working on the housing bill that just passed. Um nothing to report on yet, just that we're working with the other COGS currently to kind of create some user friendly summaries of the um legalese in there. So um that'll be coming out and if uh you're interested at all in reaching out, I did find out that Caitlin Palmer, ours director, is the person to reach out to for now. In addition to that, uh I don't think there's two, oh, we do have a new housing typology website um available. So if you want to do any visioning work with uh your residents to see kind of what type of housing they do enjoy, I believe you already did some of that, but if you want to get more in depth, we do have that available. I'll pass around my cards uh afterwards. Okay, so um getting into like my citizen mode now. Um I went through and first I want to say great job on this, on the town center plan. It's fantastic. A lot of the priorities align with um what a lot of towns are doing. Um I also do quickly want to mention that residential rezoning thing that you mentioned earlier. You guys are not allowed alone in that. Um a lot of our towns are finding that they're needing to do that and they're looking to actually do that. We overregulated and it kind of bogged up our Z B As, so um and it also uh, we don't really ne- necessarily need it. Um so they're returning to that. Anyways, getting back to this. Um so I wanted to point out a few things today that are really good and then maybe some things that uh you might want to pay attention to in the future, um should you go ahead with any of these plans. Um in the packet, I kind of uh made a little visual. The front page is uh just what is a sense of place and important aspects for it, especially for a town center. Um it's this right here, one through seven. Um it kind of goes through just a few aspects of when you're kind of planning for your town center, what you might want to pay attention, attention to. On the second page, I just printed out a smaller version of this, so you could follow along if you want to. Um and the first thing I want to point out that is really good is this infill development. This is utilizing a lot of underutilized parking and it's creating a streetscape. And the uh one of the tenants on that first page is a sense of enclosure. And so when you create buildings that have some kind of height to them, you're creating kind of this enclosure, which we feel a lot on Market Square, when you have both those buildings on either side of the streetscape and you're walking, you kind of feel hugged by the space. So this is really good. This reimagining, also really good. This, fantastic. You're orienting the buildings to the street with the parking in the back, so there's no kind of breakup in your streetscape as you're experiencing it. You don't feel that tension with uh cars interacting while you're on foot. Um, okay, so the infill is fantastic. Uh three as well over here is oriented to the street and that's great. Now, some things that we might need to, or I would recommend maybe considering um as you move forward with this plan, the big obvious one to me is that uh taking a s- a snapshot of what does work in the center of town um is Market Square is extremely successful. The frontage here on Main Street is pretty successful. And I believe what um that is telling us is that this kind of grid system that runs Main Street and Market Square, and then you have this access point on the back end, you obviously have Cedar, but then you're able to access down here and go down Lowry. And again, it creates this kind of microgrid. I think in order to allow yourself to um absorb future growth and any kind of potential, something to consider is extending Market Square and basing it, my line ain't straight, but basing your development on a continuation of what already does work. So you're creating this corridor of people who are liking to explore this space and wanting to continue. If you think about places you like to vacation or places you like to spend time in and go and travel to, usually they have a corridor in which you're exploring space. Maybe there's a cafe you take a break at, maybe there's a shop you stop in. Well, all those shops kind of feed into each other and allow you to, if you stop in this one store, maybe you go two doors down and you stop in the next and you continue on that path. So providing more space for activity like that and for you to hop down the way would be great. From there, I would then create a similar grid system to this and just see where you can orient your buildings. But the kind of planning 101 that I get all the time from um senior planning advisors is that you create your street grid first, you orient your buildings to that street and then you try to fit what you can. So from my understanding, there is a great importance for the green space in the area, which I think you can absolutely still maintain. And it would just be within that uh street grid, you're allocating parcels to be a park or to be different things uh that may be a community garden. But the important thing is, is that you know those are going to be used and they're going to be used well because there's other uses surrounding them. There's housing or maybe there's a continuation of a commercial. And a park is only as good as the other uses around it, because the other uses invite a community to come out and then you stop into the park, not just people who want to seek out a park, go seek out a park, right? So you have both that population of seeking out the park, but then you also have the population who seek out the restaurant. Then they go maybe take their lunch to the park as well, participate in that space together. So that is the main, um that's the main thing that I would say consider is this intersection, just extend Market Square um and seeing where what you can do in orienting buildings around them. The next concept um kind of gets at that last page in the pocket and it's the creation of cul-de-sacs. Cul-de-sacs are okay sometimes. Um I I, my siblings are currently growing up in one and it's great for safety of play, um which is fantastic. But when you have an oversaturation of cul-de-sacs, it creates an issue for larger cities or larger metropolitan areas for transit, but for smaller towns like us, it creates this issue of concentrating traffic on your main arterials. So basically what this means is that because cars come in here and they can't exit this way, they don't have a cut through and they don't have a grid to basically say, oh, I want to travel this way, not saying that you have to have all these directions, but just no alternative. You're concentrating all of this traffic onto this one main arterial. Similarly here, there's obviously, or there is uh talking to Paul today, a grade difference, a steep grade difference. I'm not saying that you need to do this, but maybe as you go along with this plan, trying to figure out a way to uh connect this down to John Stewart Drive just because all of this traffic is then being placed onto basically Cedar, because no one's going to come down, cut through here and then uh try to get over in this direction. They're going to go to the main arterial and continue down. And a great example of this that already currently exists is Cedar and Fen because of the amount of cul-de-sacs that are kind of behind the high school. Um you don't have any through streets, so all that traffic is coming onto Cedar and backing up Cedar, no matter where you're coming from, work, school, all of that good jazz. So we already know people complain about that, so that would be my one comment is consider that as you move forward. Um think about the implications of having kind of no access outwards from another direction when it comes to traffic. Um and then just reimagining uh from what already does work and orienting your streets similarly to this infill towards that uh continuation of the street grid from the center of town. So that's pretty much it. Um the last page on that just demonstrates kind of the implications of a cul-de-sac and where all that traffic is being pushed on the arterial and then similarly all your pedestrian traffic is as well, which creates uh high tension points, because if both are on that kind of same road, it's contentious and it also takes a lot longer to get to where you're needing to go. So that's that. I think that's pretty much it. I'll go around with my cards, but if anyone has any questions, feel free to ask. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions?
Some kind of interesting comments. Um I like that idea of pushing that Market Square towards the uh hospital area. You know, try to continue it.
Yeah, yeah, I definitely think it's a, it's a good opportunity and because it's rare to have land that you can use near your town center, you don't necessarily want to prevent um any future development. So when you put in a physical structure, it's obviously going to be there for a while. So you want to kind of be mindful in terms of what you're opening up the doors to. And I think continuing that street would open up a lot more doors than to closing it off to um just kind of displaced residential. You can still have, I love the choice in housing and the style of um making it still kind of quiet, but um just continuing that street grid, I think does open up that opportunity for future resilience and economic mobility.
Thank you.
Of course.
Anyone else have any comments? Or questions for Jacob, since we're having maybe a discussion? I don't know. I just, the only thing I would say to just, I, what's interesting about that point about Market um square, somebody actually said in one of the vis- visioning exercises we did here, somebody actually mentioned the idea of making markets where a like a pedestrian, like what do they call that? You know?
Yeah, a walkway, pedestrian zone, yeah.
Yeah, just a no car zone. And I don't know how you feel, what, how that would figure into your concept, but anyway, I think it's interesting. Well, that's all that's been, yes.
I would suggest that we maybe invite Jacob back so he can make a presentation, then there really can be. You just need to be careful because you are speaking on about public participation. We start this back and forth and we started something that we shouldn't be doing.
Yep.
You know, no offense to you.
No, no, none taken.
Yeah, I think that's a great point and um just for the commission, yep, again, it was kind of a little impromptu thing, got a call today and said, okay, yep, nope, we actually have a light agenda, but.
This is resident Jacob.
Yep, exactly. Resident Acre, public comment, but no, this is good and I think again, yeah, it sounds like the commission might have an interest in that. And again, I think it's as we move forward with our looking at zoning, what's in front of this plan, what's in front of the commission is a bulk. It's it's a massing study, it's a concept study, and this is when we get to have the fun part of actually working on regulations, which is fun and it's right, but sometimes it's gonna be a lot of work. But thinking about how that relates to, and again, new streets take a lot of work, it's, you know, how that works with development, funding. You have to worry about infrastructure, but those are a lot of conversations that we'll have going in the future, but it sounds like we could potentially invite them back and we'll go from there.
I would love to. Yeah, it would be remiss of me if I live in town and I didn't use the skills that I learned in school and in my job to not try to help out a little, so. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other, um there's nobody else online or? For public participation, okay.
No one online?
All right.
So you have all the controls now.
Any um, any remarks by commissioners at this time?
I've just had something uh push. Paul, on the uh bill eight zero zero two, I believe it's called now, housing. Have you had an opportunity to look at that?
I have started to. Um I think it's gonna.
Before or after you read the Magna Carta?
Yeah, exactly. It's, there are some elements of it. Um I think there are some elements that might end up getting worked on again. Um I think parking is always one of those questions that it's so hard to actually get in a bill correctly. Um you either say nothing and then people have an issue with it. You say, okay, under these circumstances, chances, and then you might say, you can only have this much. There needs to be flexibility and um I think I'd have to read more into that part, but I think that's could be one point of discussion. But as far as it, I think it has been modified slightly and the big part of it is we're gonna be working with CROG a lot on going from that fair share methodology to something that's more developed around the COGS for our region. I think that's more of a discussion that we'll have because Newington is less with having, again, our small lots, our small houses that we have in some areas, we we have a diversity of housing here, which is actually pretty remarkable. Um we're having new houses built that we didn't have before, very large um type of houses, but we have every, you know, if you look at, you know, it'll be on tomorrow's uh council presentation, but you look at kind of our makeup of how we are on housing, we have a lot of condos too. A lot of communities do not and did not develop the amount of condo opportunities that Newington has. We have a lot of residents who have been able to buy units. Yes, now they are, everyone's house is worth more now, but you were able to come in, they still are less than others, so. Well, Newington has a great diversity, so I think that was we, we'll have to put forward as a town saying, yes, we know that this is the numbers going forward, but let's look at what we actually are and what we offer to say, okay, yeah. We're not just large lots here. We have a lot of different houses.
Would you have a sense whether this is advisory or mandatory? Because I couldn't pick that up reading whether they didn't like our plan, we got problems, or we didn't submit a plan because we feel we're smart as they are, whatever issues that were impacted.
Yep, that.
I mean, you know, it's gotten absurd. I mean, people who wouldn't go for this have switched and I don't see anything different. I think it's a lot of frustration, quite frankly, I couldn't determine even if they're speaking to a couple of attorneys, whether it's mandatory or advisory.
Yep, and again, I'll I'll read it into detail and I think that's gonna be the concept. Again, we're gonna get some of the guidance from the COGS as they reach through it and CROG will do that as well. Um and we really determine again, what are the musts? Uh there are timelines associated with it. That will be on my office to get that stuff done, to work with the COG. Uh yes, it does add more workload. We'll see what they add for resources. I know on the last go around, there was more resources being added to the COGS. I think on this one too, does have some of the similars, so it will be, it's gonna be an interesting process um going forward. But again, I think um, you know, my recommendation is Newington going forward is if we participate, but make sure that we say what we are, uh because this is great, you know, we've, we provide a lot of housing opportunities, more so than a lot of the communities. There are some communities that are very, very dense. There are some communities that are just completely spread out and have huge lots. Newington is not, you know, either of those, but we do have some very, you know, we have areas of denser housing that has provided opportunity for first time home buyers and that other people around don't necessarily have.
I want to quickly, Mr. Chairman, and then I'll stop. Um the bill, as I read it, said that you can have a public hearing on this whole issue in March. Uh it's something that they're allowing. I'm not sure suggesting to communities, but yet the plan itself, it gives you have to submit by June or beyond June, but.
Uh again, I I gotta get the timelines down on myself too, yeah.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um anyone else? Any, yes.
Can I make an update on Francis Avenue and maybe a lot of it?
Um the update is uh again, currently working through the case. Um you can easily go on the judicial um site and see what's been filed, but again, it is still in process. Still in process. Yep, again, everyone can see what's publicly put out there on the judicial website as far as orders, motions, things going forward. Yes.
Anyone else would like to make any comments at this time? That's Commissioner comments. Opportunity is about to close three T one. Okay. Um I have no comments and so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All favor.
Hi.
Good night. Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
All right, thank you.
Bye, Chris. Off the record.